I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Dolly, would you take the roll, please?
Degner, Kramer, Martin, here. Stevens, Wonder.
President of the Citizen Time. Any citizen want to address the board? You know the procedure. Any citizen want to address the board? Seeing none, title before the committee. We only have one. And that's discussion with relative to the controller position vacancy. So, board, let's go at it. I see Sonya provided us with the ad we had last time. Did everybody review that? Pardon?
Yes.
John, you?
Yep.
Okay. Did everybody think that satisfactory?
How about starting salary will be commensurate with experience. Is that what we want to say here?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Not add education?
You can't, I don't. In Wisconsin, you put in specify education. I don't know. I just, you know, it can be considered in.
Well, the next paragraph covers education.
Okay.
Qualifications.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I see that. All right.
Yeah. Okay. Is the board in agreeance?
You don't specify the type of master's degree. Is that something that we should?
I don't know.
Master's degree in accounting or public administration or something?
Public administration, probably.
Well, but a public administrator doesn't necessarily be a finance person. And we need budget, we need a budget person. We need a financial person.
Barbara, why don't we wait and see what applicants we got? And then look at their degrees. How does that sound?
Well, I think we probably.
If you're gonna apply for this.
Yeah, if you're gonna apply for this, it's gotta be some. People have to know that they're applying for it. Somewhere, we have to mention what our preferences are. If they. You know.
Okay. So, for discussion.
Well, I think Barbara's got a point there. I think we need to sort of specify that we can, we can say we want the degree of bachelor's or a master's, but then we, we wanna highlight the public, public administration or finance. They definitely have to have a degree in finance, I think. This is very critical because of the budget process that we gotta go through. And I think if you're gonna apply for this job and have a good run at it, you best have some knowledge.
Or what about, or with experience?
Well, experience.
It says five years.
Experience, yeah. I mean, experience goes a long way. You know, I, I think somebody with experience is, is just a good candidate as somebody that's got a degree right out of college.
Well, that's my point.
We could put preferably in public administration or finance. We don't have, it would be preferred, but it's not required.
Correct. Yeah.
Can't require that, but we can, at least it gives people who are applying a sense of, you know, how they fit. Do you wanna add that after?
What's your thought, Ann, and you?
I think we should say that, you know, maybe candidates should possess a bachelor's degree or a master's degree, comma, preferably in public administration or accounting.
Or finance.
Or finance.
Which one?
Or accounting slash finance. Preferably in public administration.
Or accounting slash finance?
Or accounting slash finance.
Okay. Joe, what's your comment?
Well, I have no problem with making it clear. So, however we wanna word it, we're gonna look at the applicants thoroughly anyway.
Can we agree to add the comments that Barb and Ann has suggested?
Come with them clarified.
Okay. Sonya, are you taking notes?
I am.
So you can change this.
Yep.
What, what are they?
It ended up being the second paragraph, second sentence. Candidate should possess a ma, a bachelor's degree or master's degree, preferably in public administration or accounting slash finance. And have at least five years of experience in public administration, preferably in county government.
Sounds better. Do we need a motion on that?
I'll move that we add that phrase, preferably in public administration.
She worded it, okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Move by Barb.
All support.
Support by Ann. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Now, when you get this retyped, will you put copies in the mailbox?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. What else we got? I see Sonya got listed papers we advertised in last time. Oh, okay. Ann pointed out. Submit a detailed resume and letter of interest by. I personally was thinking August 1. That's three weeks of August, then.
So, Sonya's last day is July 22.
Yeah.
So, August 1, you're seeing that.
Well, that's three weeks for somebody to get that. But that's up to the board. What you think, board?
Well, I think we add one more, and that would be the county, the, I don't know, senior over here, the United States Labia Snuff, the Michigan.
NACO.
NACO.
Yeah. National Association.
Joe, settle on a date for the deadline first.
Well, you were asking about this before.
Yeah, I know. And Ann brought me back. I'm sorry.
August 1st is fine with me. That gives people plenty of time.
I think, can I add? I think you're gonna have a problem with that date because these places that you're putting them in aren't gonna be able to get them in that quick. The papers, a few days, but the rest of them, you're lucky if it's two weeks before they get it in.
You'll get it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It takes time to get, they only, yeah, they only get them in at certain times, and I think you're gonna cut your nose off.
We also have the primary app on the second.
No, I, I think it's kinda related with the first. I think it's almost gotta be a month from now. I think we're gonna have to work some time with them to control it.
John, I haven't heard from you yet. Shoot out some numbers for it.
August 15th.
I mean, if you wanna get a good.
August 12th is the second Friday of the month.
August 12th at 4:30?
Yep. That gives, it's okay. It's the 5th, the 12th, the 19th, or the 26th.
Motion's in order.
Go ahead, Ann.
Remove that detail, resume and letter of interest should be submitted by August 12 at 4:30 PM Central Time.
2016.
Okay. Is there support to the motion?
I'll support that.
Joe did. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Now, Joe.
I'd like to add NACO to that list.
National Association of Counties.
They're a national organization.
There's also Michigan Nonprofit Association. They have a job listing. I don't think it costs anything. Or MML, I heard.
MML.
Michigan.
Municipal.
Michigan Municipal League.
How about MAC, Joe? Where do you see MAC?
Michigan Association of Counties.
Oh, way down there.
They'll put it on there online.
The Green Bay paper.
Green Bay Press Gazette.
I like the Green Bay paper.
Yeah.
I thought we did last time. Okay. Any more suggestions?
So.
We're about to produce those whatever it comes to.
We gotta do it.
I can.
Township Association.
Michigan, so MAC will be probably free. Michigan Works should be free.
Townships Association. We should get the MTA, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
They should all be free. Should be, maybe not.
Any further discussion?
How many times, how many times would you like to run it in these papers?
Up to the board.
Oh, you have three times. Is that what we've done the last?
How about if we run it twice?
We want the widest reach possible. I think we should also put it on county website, too.
Oh, we will.
Okay. How many times you wanna run the episode?
Three times.
Three times?
Yep.
Barb? Joe or John? Okay, three times. If we moved on this.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You got all the names in as we went, Ann.
Yep.
Did we vote, Dolly?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Keep it straight, Dolly.
I will.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on all of these publications?
Well, blanket.
I don't think we did that.
No, you haven't, but.
Oh.
I don't know if you have to do that.
Well, for the sake of.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I thought we moved on.
No, not on the publications.
Okay, motion's in order.
Then we place an ab and run it, run it three times in the following publications. Iron Mountain Daily News, the Escanaba Paper, Marquette, the Amity, Sioux St. Marie, Colton, Green Bay, and then Michigan Township Association, Michigan Municipal League, MAC, Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Works, NA, NA Counties, and then also put it on our website.
Okay. Is there support? Support by Barb. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, far as discussing salary or anything, I think we can wait until we get the applicants in. What you think, thoughts, board?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. What else do we have to cover regarding the controller position?
The other information is just for you to review. Some questions that were used last time. This is for you if you wanna review it.
Some of these questions, though, they have to be changed.
Yeah, we can use them, but I think we should add the.
Well, the one, especially number 11.
Yeah. Something's gonna come up. Okay. We'll read them over. What else you got, board?
Is it time to discuss the interim controller?
I don't know how it could be an interim.
There will just be no one in the opposition until this position is filled.
That would be my thought, yeah.
I'm not interested in appointing an interim.
So, what do we do, check on the applicants?
Act as the controller for signing documents and preparing the agenda.
Diana, Diana has, has some experience, and she's, she's doing a really good job. I think she could probably handle that along with Henry. And, you know, his chair, he knows everything that's going on here, so.
Well, I sign all the papers usually as chairman, so. I don't know. Let's try it.
I don't think, I don't think any other department can afford to lose a, to, to go down another employee. Everybody's tight, so.
So Diana will take over putting together the agendas and the packets and?
She pretty much does that now.
She puts together the agendas and I review them. Henry reviews them, too. There's not many things that are only signed by one person. Most everything has more than one on it, whether it's myself and Dolly, myself and Treasure, Henry, so.
And I can tell you this, that I'm more than willing to help whenever we can, and I'm sure Lauren is, too. I mean, to even think that somebody can do that even by themselves is crazy. But we will help.
Well, whoever we hire is, you know, they have to have some time to do their due diligence on their end, so the key is to get person in place, of course, as soon as possible, but I think if we can go a couple weeks without a controller, we should be able to get through that.
We're gonna be longer than that.
There are some counties that don't have controllers, not so much our size, but there are counties in UP that county board handles everything.
They get paid.
There's a lot of them in UP, most.
Are there budget deadlines coming up between now and, say, September 15?
It depends. It depends on, you know, what, what timeframe. You know, every controller is done in a different timeframe, so.
Are there any major contracts that have to be negotiated coming up that you can foresee?
Labor's a root for two more years.
And the line is good? That's all set? The hangers at the airport? All set?
If we have to, I think the board can meet more often. If things come up, we'll have the board meeting. How does that sound?
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
I'll take a roll for a while. Okay, what else? We got anything, board? I think we got it pretty well covered. Joe, you got any further comments? Barb? John?
Yeah.
How about Sonya? Any advice?
I'm gonna go ahead and run these, then, effective as soon as I get these changes made. Go ahead.
As soon as possible.
All right. We'll get it on the website tomorrow, and she, she can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Any other business?
Yes, I have one. I have one thing. I had mentioned at the last county board meeting about the veterans, and we're gonna have another tight budget cycle, as we all know. You know, we're, we're taking all the heat for making the cuts in the, in the budget that were necessary and mandated because we didn't have the funding. I would like to take a proactive approach to this thing and do something, if we can, for the, for the veterans, to fund them. And I think, I like Marquette's model, what they've modeled, what they've done, is they made it a county agency and put out a military request, the voters approved it, and then it's not the decision of the county to make that cut. It would be the decision of the voters, and if the voters approve it, it would continue on. Otherwise, if it gets voted down, then we have to live within our means and operate the way we are now. But we're taking all kinds of negativism from the public because we had to do, because the state is not funding us, and we're, we're getting tax or revenue cases against us. And I think it's, if we look into the Marquette version, they went for a tenth of a mill, and they're only drawing point eight. They have two employees. They are hired, the, the controller is responsible, the county board appoints, hires them, and they have a advisory board, and it's only an advisory board, and their, their veterans are pretty happy up there. And I think if, if we don't do that and get into the budget cycle and have to make cuts again because we don't have the money, you know, I, I truly believe that the veterans do deserve some respect for what they've done for this country.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I like to see their model. I know Marquette is, is going forward and have posted that way. You know, the veterans is probably the biggest thing I've lost sleep over the last couple of years. I'd like to look at that, but if we went for mileage, that would be for 18 then? Could be for 17, could it?
Well, if you hurry, you can get it on November.
What's the deadline? August 1?
It is August 16.
Yeah, so we got two meetings.
You would have to have the right language, have to be approved, so the timeline is pretty tight.
And then, in the meantime, you'd have to make them into county department.
Yes. That is, that is, that is something I think we, whether we do it or not, we, we owe it to them to at least look into and see which way we can go. Now, whether, now the voters, they, say, John, it's up to the voters to prove it, disapprove that, but I don't know what kind of mileage we go for, you know? If they wanna continue, if we wanna continue for, let's say, 90, a thousand a year or something. If it becomes part of the county, then we have to look at other options, too. Are they gonna be part of, you know, healthcare, and the retirement, and all that stuff?
I know, but if, if that, if that is the point, that we don't wanna do that, I think we really need to seriously look at this and try to come up with some way to be able to fund them. That agency, I mean, that brings in a lot of dollars to the county.
You know, a lot of money. 17, was it 17? I forget the number, but it's staggering, a lot of money.
I know that Mike Miller told me in a phone conversation that there's no way that his office ever would need $90,000 a year. He said he can't figure out why they needed that much in the first place. That was a comment to me, and I realize I'm repeating it, so it's hearsay, but he said 60,000 would be plenty.
Well, I think we're gonna wait to see what the mileage does, you know?
Well, we have time after that, right?
That might be something to consider.
You know, the whole thing is, the whole thing is, you're looking at, we're looking at this as wait and see, wait and see. Let's take a proactive approach on this, and let's move, let's start moving and doing something. Maybe we, you know, we're, we're catching grief from everybody because they're not happy about what's happening. So, if we went out there and, and put this on, on the agenda and discussed it and moved on it, I truly think people are gonna look differently upon the way we operate.
John, we got a lot of unhappy people. Now, far as the mileage, it's fine, but I don't wanna see a county department. If you got a mileage, leave the mileage, go right to them, run their own department.
Can't do that. No, it's gotta be a county.
It's gotta be a county.
It's gotta be a county.
I, I would like to see the model. I would like to read and study the Marquette model. All the, all the rules, regulations, administrative policies, hiring procedures, benefits, everything. I wanna see that whole package, and, and I will look at it, and I will read it, and I will be ready to discuss it.
Okay. That's good food for talk, John.
So, can you?
Do you want the model from them? We can get it.
Yeah, I want everything. I want, I wanna know.
Cause I think it's just the same as the counties. I mean, their county department and.
Yeah. Well, I wanna know.
So, you know, by, I think we should consider this. You're right, John. It's worth looking into. This would increase the size of the county government. On the one hand, we have reduced the workforce, and now we would be bringing more people in and paying all of the expenses of employees.
That would be what the mileage would be for.
The mileage would cover it.
It would be self-funded.
Self-funded. The mileage would fund it.
If the mileage fails, then you go back.
That is the understanding that they would have to understand, that if the mileage fails, we go back and we live within our means, and that is the way we operate now.
It would be self-funded.
And that is what they projected to us, that's what they wanted to propose to us, and we didn't listen to it.
It's gonna have to, we're really gonna have to look at that model to see salaries, benefits, pension costs, healthcare costs. Those are costs that ask for that.
I realize, I realize that.
We really have to look at that model, of course.
Although the, the benefits now are not nearly as, as impactful as they were in 1996.
Right. They're paying, everybody's paying their portion now, where it's, it's not as, as extensive to the county government as it was in the past.
If it's the county agency, you can also set the hours also.
You set the hours, and you hire and you fire.
And they're part-time, so they get no benefits.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You could set the hours.
If you set them part-time, if they required a full-time, then you would have to look at that. But I think, I think we, we as a county board have to give that a, a good look because we already know our budget's gonna be tight. And, and, and I don't foresee any improvement in, in the next year or so, that our revenues are gonna start flowing in here, so. I mean, let's, let's, let government operate. Let's let the taxpayer say yes or no.
We don't have time. Our next meeting isn't till the 3rd. So, and then it's, you'd have to language it, too. There isn't time to wait for our next meeting, I don't think, to get it up.
You do that till August 16.
Yeah, you got till August 16.
August, oh, I'm sorry. Fine.
There are two meetings.
That was in July, August.
Is it the EGEN in six weeks? I thought the EGEN in six weeks, cause we're putting a ballot initiative on, and, and they said you did six weeks to okay it.
Yeah, but it's small.
Dale, Dolly will check it out. Okay, what else you got, board?
Well, John, there was that letter from North Care inviting proposals for substance abuse in Upper, Western Upper Peninsula. It was not on that list of providers.
No business.
They're out of business now. I was gonna ask whether they were putting forward a proposal.
They are out of business. They, they consolidated their business into Great Lakes, and Great Lakes is now representing the Western UP.
Okay.
Where are we with that check we all in? Have you paid that?
What check?
That's with UP.
UP? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, let's wind this up. We keep adding stuff to the agenda. Okay, we're back to citizen time. Any citizen want to address the board?
Yes, I do. It's for your, Miss Dolly and Sonya, your name's on that, Mr. Henry will, if I can do that. It's July 6, 2016. This is the Dickson County Board of Commissioners, and it regards the senior citizen mileage. Attached fine, number one, copies of the senior mileage and language that has been on the Dickson County ballot since about 1990 with the two words "and programs," which put approximately $3,462,900 directly into the hands of the Dix County Executive Directors from 2006 to 2015. This does not include the years 1990 to 2005 and 2016, which will be millions more. Number two, we have a copy of the million mileage dollar details for 2006 to 2015, and those are all from the Dickson County budgets. Number three, there's a copy of the letter of August 31, 2015, from Sandra Esperin, Executive Director, DixA, to the Dickson County Board of Commissioners, regards 2016 senior mileage allocations. This letter is almost an exact copy of the letters from Dix County Executive Directors, Elizabeth Hardacre, Jeffrey Hino, and others, that were presented to you each year after publicly closed annual meeting between the Executive Director and a few of their close friends from each of the five Dickson County Senior Centers. After this meeting, this and other letters were presented to you prior to the budget meeting, and you, each year, without fail, gave your approval and put all of the senior mileage money in their control. Now, DixA is expecting you to hand over to them this month, the last of the senior mileage money for 2016. I believe this is about $59,000. Now, we are requesting that you instead give this to the Norway Vulcan seniors to keep their concrete meal program going until they get the state and federal dollars they are being promised. Now, we're also requesting that the senior milages for 2017 and beyond be put on the November 2016 ballot to remove the words "and programs" and to assure that all the mileage dollars go directly to the centers, providing they have all the rules, articles of corporation and so forth, in place to handle these dollars for their senior citizens. And signed Gerald McColl, Concerned Senior Citizen, I'll give this to all five Dickson County Senior Centers and others. Now, the first is, is pages, having a little bit of senior citizen milages, what they are, including those "and programs" in there for each and every one to look at. Next one is the details for the, where we come up with that $3 million for those years and stuff, and how they get it all in their hand, and the way they really get it is this letter that's, that, of August 31, 2015, from DixA, to Dickson County Board of Commissioners, Dickson County Courthouse, Ironwell, Michigan, 49801, regard 2016 senior mileage allocations. Dear Commissioners, on August 27, 2015, we met with the representatives of the five Dear Commissioners, on August 27, 2015, we met with the representatives of the five Dickson County senior centers. The purpose of submitting this meeting was to discuss the distribution of the 2016 Dickson County senior mileage funding of approximately $390,000, less estimated 8% county administration cost of $31,440, totaling $361,560 anticipated mileage. Each center understands that we are partners in this process, they have requested funds that meets their individual center needs. They understand that more funding for centers leaves less for Dixa operating senior programs, including Family Ties Adult Center, concrete home delivery meals, transportation, in-home services, and other senior programs. Then it lists the senior center representatives, what they talked, and, and then, on the bottom, she says, "I have been very specific with the centers to ensure that they know that Dix does not allocate these dollars, and the actual allocation is done by the commissioners." They understand that the remainder of the funds which go into Dix have exceeded the amount listed above, as the actual amount of dollars generated by the mileage is not yet known. And the last part is.
Okay, Sonia, would you make copies for the board?
The last part of it here said, "I have also made them aware that our agreement is non-binding and subject to your approval. I also advise the centers that with the funding reductions, we have experienced the programs, it may be extremely difficult to sustain the programs at their current levels, which we make for the difficult decisions later in the year." Please, McCall and so fortunate, signed this by Sandra Esmondrup, and copy to Sonia from Dickson County.
Thank you, Gerald. Any other citizen?
One thing to the board, um, as you know, I've been pretty critical on items. I like what John just said, John has been extremely proactive from day one, and I'm not saying the board isn't, but you need to be more proactive. I watched Turbo the other night on the news from Marquette County and how he explained what they were doing, and one statement that caught my attention from me was, "We will not make a decision until we have our taxpayer input." They do a lot of canvassing before they make their decisions. So please consider, I know it's a tight schedule, let me maybe do something with another department, but consider what John is saying. If we could be more proactive, guys like me will get off your back, and maybe I'll applaud you more. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone want to address the board?
Henry, just one thing, did you see where systems went after a tax payment?
I just think that's the paper now.
Yeah, and they're, um, and right now they got an IFT, and, and they're getting 50%, so they want to go from 10 million down to 1.4 million.
86%.
And so what they want to do then is, being they got an IFT, they can get 50% cut off of that 1.4 billion, which brings them down taxable to 700,000.
Oh, my.
Okay, so, yeah, so you guys are going to lose, I think we figured 30-some thousand, and we're going to lose 90-some thousand, we're going to fight it, you know? And I was talking to Jordan, and it just, just coming from me, it's not nothing representing the city in a way, means, or manner, but, um, I was talking to Jordan about, I'm thinking, you know, well, maybe the percentage that you guys lose and the percentage that we lose, maybe it could be a 70-30 deal, I know you guys don't have the money, but maybe it's a 70-30 deal, we pay 70% of the lawyer fees, you pay 30, you know, depending on what we're losing, if we're losing 50 and you're losing 50, well, then it's a 50-50, but it's not that way, we're going to lose a, a lot of money on this one, you know? But I'm hoping we're going to fight it.
Okay, any other citizen want to address the board? Say none, a motion to adjourn. Move, move, John, support Barb, all in favor, signify by aye. All same sign, motion carried.